We do have a seven thirty we do have a quorum, may it be registered and open reading law.
I am the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education, Rock School District, I three of Woods County, Oklahoma. Do hereby certify that prior to December the fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regularly scheduled meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. If any change has been made to the date, time, and place of this regularly scheduled meeting, prior to proper notice as we given in writing, the county clerk is required by law no less than ten days prior to implementation of said change. I also certify that there's twenty-four hours prior to the meeting including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, that the date, time, and place and agenda of this meeting were posted in common public view at the location of this meeting. With my hand and seal, this school district is eight day of August two thousand and sixteen.
Rick?
Here.
Clint?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Here.
Mister's comments?
No visitors comments. You'll have to pass those around sometime in the years.
Okay, I've got a couple of thank you notes here from a couple of teachers. I guess when I read those from their...
Read yours too.
And then number five, opening of bids for the purchase of a new electric...
Okay, I have two bids, Markering Motors and Pete Ashen Chevrolet. Markering Motors. Bid price for Markering is thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And the bid is subject to the truck availability. And he even said that if he couldn't find that truck, then he couldn't find that. He knew where somewhere when he did this, but he said that's just whether or not they're still available. Pete Ashen. Pete Ashen Chevrolet wishes to enter bid for two thousand and sixteen Chevrolet Silverado, thirty-five hundred four-wheel drive crew cab. According to your specifications, thirty-seven thousand four hundred. So by the bids submitted, Pete Ashen's the low bid.
Both for the same truck?
Yes, yes, they had a... I'll look that over, but I'm sure it's the same truck.
They're being contacted here.
Yes, because I got a sheet from Ashen Chevrolet that had everything listed on it. So they both had the same sheet to get off of.
So your recommendations?
My recommendations that we buy the pickup from Pete Ashen Chevrolet in Fairview.
Do you have a motion to purchase the pickup from Pete Ashen for thirty-seven thousand four hundred?
I move. Second.
You're excited.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Vote to approve or reject the bid. Oh, that is what we just did. Okay, all the following items will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of the following items. Is it agenda, consistent discussion, consideration, and approval of following items?
Just a couple of items from... As far as finances go, our evaluation is up a little bit, three or four million dollars, which is, you know, not a significant amount, but it is, it's equal or up, not down. I don't have that one from, I don't have the final paper from Woods County, but I looked at her preliminary paper about a month ago, and it was up a little bit at that time. So, and she thought that would be real, real close, maybe even, I don't know if it was exact, but she thought really she had everything yet, it just hadn't been approved. So I have Major County and I have Woodward County, and they were both up a little bit. So, you know, valuation stays up, which is a good thing.
What is it?
Sixty-one million. I mean, I'm just, that's just a guess. I don't have an exact one right here. But it was fifty-eight something, it's sixty-one something right now. And I'll know exactly when hers comes in. I looked at the last three years expenditures and, you know, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, we were up about a hundred and forty thousand. Two thousand and sixteen, we ended up about two hundred and thirteen thousand. So, you know, we've spent a little more money the last couple of years, but then the list is pretty lengthy about all the things that we've bought and done in the last three years. And really, those amounts are not very much when you look at, you know, sidewalks, buildings, paint, new bleachers, greenhouse. We bought three buses, so, you know, spending a hundred and forty thousand more, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars more, we're still, we're doing everything we need to do and still taking care of our money. So financially, we're in good condition.
Anybody have any questions?
Do you foresee any more big purchases in the next few months? Coast and Long or Coast and...
Well, we need to get back to, we need to get back on our bond issue. We need to get back in here and at least decide if we're going to try to, you know, go with everything and get those guys back in here so we can start putting some project, or some things together for, you know, to get out to the public and start pushing that. So we really need to start thinking about having some meetings and work on that bond proposal because we need to have, we need to have an election in January, so.
Do you see any more upgrades that needs to be done here?
Well, we need to, I mean, just... The biggest thing right now, you know, is the heating and air conditioning is the thing that's got to be, that's my first priority as far as this building. You know, we just put new skin on the ag building and we've got some overhead doors that need some looking at, but that's minor as far as cost. Any big things? No, I think all those things are, we've actually visited about them on the bond issue. And, you know, just how many of those projects you really want to take on, but...
What about upgrades in the kitchen? Have you looked at any of that?
Well, I have, I have one thing down here that I would say on my, on my principles before, but I'll just say it right now, we're kind of talking about that. But the gas stove in there is, they had some problems lighting it and some of the burners. And the guy from the gas company told me that I needed to have someone check that because that might be a problem that needs to be looked at, and I haven't.
Is that the same one we came with the building?
Probably.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Yeah.
It's one of the same ones?
I'm betting it is. And, but anyway, he was here because they cut one of our gas lines, so they were here last week and had to hook that back up Thursday or Friday, whatever day that, I guess, maybe that was Friday because I went here Thursday. And he said we probably need to have someone look at that stove. But, you know, and that's going to be, you know, it's going to be a few thousand dollars because that's a, you know, a commercial, big stove. But, you know, we've replaced the ovens. So that'd be probably about the only other thing that, you know, my freezer and stuff are still fine in there. And they have to be worked on, and they had to be worked on here, you know, a couple of weeks ago. They were running a little warmer than we thought, but, you know, it's a free on issue, so.
Anybody else have any more questions?
On our insurances, that, how's that changed from last year? Is there much of a difference?
These are just the enclosures.
Yeah, yeah, it will, yeah, but we did that last month. Clinton went up, and I can't remember from last month what it went up. I had it written down during the last board meeting.
Is it still competitive though?
But, yeah, you know, it's kind of getting to the point where I might look at bringing another bid in, but I wouldn't want to mess with it at that price.
For the motions of acceptance of the... Clint?
Yes.
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 Have a report to bring in?
Okay, we talked about a couple of things, about the stove in the kitchen. If you've noticed, we've got a mess out there, but we've got the new skin on the ag building, and we've still got to get a couple of the doors looked at, overhead doors looked at. But I'll get that taken care of. And I think one of the first things that Mr. Anderson is going to do is get his kids out there to get that stuff picked up. I've got one of those big dumpsters, I'm with the city, and they got one stuck out there the other day, so we're ready to get all that stuff picked up. In the board packet, we're going to call that the good metal out there, the good tin, a surplus because some of the farmers said they were interested in it. So, you know, we're not just going to have somebody haul off. So they'll pile the gutters and some of that stuff that's nobody wants, and some wire and some little pieces, we'll pile that up and I'll have somebody come haul that off. I can't afford to haul it off, no more than they're getting a ton out of it. It'd cost me more gas to do it themselves, and time, so. I've talked to a guy, he was down here the other day looking around. He said when I figured out what pieces we weren't going to try to sell, to call him, he'd come get it. So that's what I'll do on that.
Speaking of gutters, don't interrupt you, are you, are we going to go ahead and put gutters on those buildings?
I, I'll just have to look and see how that's going to, what we're going to do on that. I assumed that I would put gutters back on it, but I really, I don't know how I'm going to do that. I'm looking at that and try to start to figure that out, so. But anyway, we've been, I've been down there, but I haven't decided how and what areas, you know, really need gutters and which part probably is a waste of time and space. But I'll get that done and get that put back on there, on the places that I think it's going to be a problem. You've got the letters. We had a team building is kind of what we referred to it as and went to the city last week and had a good time, only had two injuries. So that, some of the things that we did, that's probably pretty good. And Mr. Chrisup and Mr. Smith, they were, they were the entertainment for a little while while we were there, for sure. So, but we had a good time and everybody enjoyed it. You know, you got a couple of the notes from a couple of the teachers, and we had a good time. And I think it was probably a good deal because the new teachers, you know, had a chance to be involved with everybody else. And sometimes, you know, like if they're elementary, they don't even know who the secondary teachers are, and they don't really, don't have any reason to be around them. And then, but, you know, we were kind of forced to get together and visit and have a good time. So that, we got home about eleven-thirty and had a good time, so that was a fun deal. Like I say, we've got the, we got the ag building fixed and we'll get it cleaned up this week. It looks pretty good. I've had a couple of board members talk to me about maybe checking on some prices on a tractor with a front-end loader and brush beater or whatever you want to call it, some sort of mower. And, you know, the county's been pretty good to help me out this year down at the Ag Barn and up here on the highway. But, you know, that's something that we probably could use at times. You know, it's one of those, it's kind of one of those things, you know, are we really going to use it and make things look better around here, or is it just going to be something I have to, up here at where I want to park? But I will get some prices in the next couple of weeks and I'll kind of contact you with what's going on. I know that John Deere should have a state bid list, so, you know, he should be able to tell me what he can get it for. And we should be able to do that if it's, if it ends up being something that we want to pursue, so. Started our in-service today. We did our CPR and training and first aid training this morning. And then Mr. Meriwether had some principals meetings this afternoon. Tomorrow, we'll go through all the FERPA and the bullying, all the policies that we have to cover and somebody has to sign off on. We'll do that starting in more than eight o'clock. And then bus driving things Wednesday, and I'll take care of the bus drivers and do all their information, give them their material. And Thursday, we'll have kids coming through the doors and we'll be right back at it, but...
You got more bus drivers getting there, air brakes?
Well, Beau, Mr. Westfall, and Mr. Gaskell, they went through the five-day training here a couple of weeks ago. And they're supposed, they may take their test Wednesday. I don't know if they're going to try to get the Alva yellow bus or they're going to use ours. They can use ours, but sometimes apparently the instructor or whatever giving the test kind of frowns on using those activity buses. So the guy from Alva said if you want to use our yellow bus with air brakes, that you can do that. So that'll be something that Beau and him will have to decide how they want to do it. But if it works out, we'll have at least two more. And Mr. Beavers has his air brakes. And so, you know, if one of those other two guys did it, we should be, we should be okay for football and basketball and everything. Not have to use Gilbert quite as much, but... And Gilbert said if we went on any long ones like we did when we went to, was it, what did we go last year? Then he, he said when he got to, I guess Granfield. When he got back to, from Granfield, he was out here somewhere and he thought he was lost. So he said that he wasn't doing that again, you know, so. And I said, well, I understand that. We'll better do something about that. All right, anybody, anything else? Any questions? Or, I mean, school's fixing to start and everybody showed up this morning, so we're excited. All right, Mr. Meriwether?
I really don't have a lot to add. You kind of said it all.
All right, I took your, took your...
Only thing I'd probably add is of course, I'm thinking with a greenhouse all summer. And we've got the aquaponics system putting in, Kaiser came up and he'll do that. Because of Mr. Nutter must have tested some of the two professors in college. So it's up and running. I put some fish in there that we caught over the weekend. They said you can keep the fish alive for a couple of weeks, you want it to be all right, that they can kind of check it for the last thing. I'm going to put it in water, just to keep it getting chlorine out, it takes the day to do that. And so, leaving a plan of that, I just started some plans up there to stick it what they did. So we started kind of getting things going to the teachers. It's, that's going to be a fun little deal. Mr. Nutter's kind of getting into that. So, he'll be part of those science classes, he's quite involved in coming in and testing water plants. So, just trying to get things going. Teachers are excited, it's a good meeting today. We're going to break it down.
Any questions? Number nine, vote to approve or not to approve the contract for second degree career and technology education program in two thousand and sixteen.
I'm moved. That's it? Can you get that? Yes.
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 Consideration and action to accept dual enrollment credits at math and science and workforce technologies.
Okay, what this is, is this is the classes that the VOTEC can teach. You know, if we have a kid up there that needs a class and they're in VOTEC, or if we just need to send one up there for some, you know, basically credit recovery, it could be. This just allows us to put it on their transcript and it allows them to teach our kids and us to get credit for it. So I need someone to, okay, that we accept the dual enrollment credits.
Yes.
Yes.
Consideration and action to accept dual enrollment credits for most of the time.
No.
Okay, consideration and actions to accept dual enrollment credits for most of the time. Edgenuity?
Edgenuity. Okay, edgenuity is just, like I said, it's an online curriculum. And you may have a student for whatever reason that just goes up there and works online and completes a unit and gets credit for it. But it's, it'd be teacher-led, but it would be off the computer. We have, we can have edgenuity here, you know, everybody has it. But if they're at the tech center and taking an online course, then again, we can give them credit for it. Maybe they can have it on their transcript.
Yes?
Yes.
Consideration and action to accept dual enrollment credits for most of the time.
I'm moved.
She's a, she's a person up there that they have employed and they have on their personnel report. But if any of our kids are in that, like if anybody in nursing may have her at some time.
One second.
Yes. Yes.
Discussion and proposal action to add to following policy in twenty years from now.
Okay, the reason I put this one up because, you know, in case we had some more discussion, because we do not have this policy at all. And also, there is a policy that the state school board has on social networking sites. And this one, this one basically covers, this one is more, the one from the state, and it's probably not in there for now, it's probably not in that package. Was it this one? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, right there it is. I didn't think it was in that package, it was separate. And this one just is more to the point. This is more general, covering everything. And then there's some parts on here, like the one that's circled. And it wasn't circled for this meeting, it was just already circled. But, you know, all contacts and messages by coaches and team members shall be sent to all team members except messages involved in medical action, type of matter. So there's some things on the OSSBA that are more direct and spelled out than they are in the district policy that we, that we've got here. And this has been looked at by attorneys. And I know that at a different school, they had a teacher that bad-mouthed some other teachers and she lost her job and held up. I don't really think she fought it, but she must knew what went her hell up, hold up. She's no longer important to the system. What I would like to have, unless somebody's got a different idea or wants to put more into it, is that someone make a motion that we accept the Minoka Public Schools district policy with the addition of...
DHAC.
Of the DHAC.
I'll make that motion.
Can you move?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, now, you have all the policies. I've looked at them and what they are, I have, the only one that I'm going to like bring to your attention is the third grade retention and the student, student retention regulations. I'll take care of that in just a second. But what I did, I just kind of went through the book with the updated policies from the policy service. And what you're going to have is you're going to have a line added or you're going to have a line subtracted. We have all of these policies in our book, but there's just some little, some, you know, like I say, some small difference. And, you know, I could, I could get the book and we could go over them line to line. I don't think there's any reason to do that. DNA, for example, you know, it has during the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, well, they've changed that to two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. They've taken out the academic growth measures, which we knew they were taking that out. So all this teacher evaluation on the DNA, all it does is remove the old language of the law. So, you know, this, this just updates our policy book. And there was a few that I had, that they were word for word with what we already had, so I didn't put them in here. You know, there's no use in going over them if they're the same as what we already had. If you find E one A R four, and they should be in alphabetical order. E one A dash R four. We went through there, well, we, Mrs. Meriwether and Mrs. Bixler went through there because they do the third grade reading and they do the kids being moved from third grade to fourth grade if they didn't pass the reading test, so forth and so on. So they went through this policy, and there's some, there's some things in the policy that do not pertain to our size school. And they marked that out and changed that. And also in E one A R five, they completely did away with the mid-year promotion, fourth grade. They said that we didn't, we don't do that and don't need to do that. So, like I said, that was one that I didn't know for sure because, you know, like I say, some of it is law, some of it is this is what you could do or whatever. And I gave that to them and they went through it and fixed it. So I think all our policies that we have listed are up to date and pertain to what, you know, we're doing here at schools size wide.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. Professional growth and development?
What's the number on it?
D and B.
D and B?
B, or D, yes, D and B.
Okay.
Who's on our professional development?
Yeah, that's a committee. And I, I didn't go down there and... The head of the... And what that changed is, well, you see the language that they took out of the old one. A minimum once every four years, a committee shall include at least one councilor's membership. You know, that's, that's a change, you know, from the one we had before. And that's basically what they all are. They just either added some language or took some language out.
Well, for example, like we're going to approve these committees.
Mm-hmm.
Should we at least be aware of who's on that committee?
Yeah, I can.
If it's part of a policy. I can have that, I can have that for you.
I can have that, I can have that for you.
Any, any other questions on the policy changes?
Okay. Transportation regulation. C N R one. H two. This was just kind of surprising me that, um... On the D and B dot middle of the page.
Okay, is that called a controlled dangerous substance?
Within eight hours of the operation.
Well, if any, I mean...
So, you, you could use controlled dangerous substance out, just outside of eight hours of the operation?
Well, uh, if any, if any of our, if any of our bus drivers are, if anyone, uh, thinks that they're under the influence of anything, I can make them go get a drug test right then. I can tell them, go get a drug test. I can take them, you know, and they can say yes, or they can say no and get fired. And if they're in an accident, then they're gonna, they're going to go get checked within two hours.
That's what I was wondering, if it was like, things that they would say you can't...
Okay, alright.
Did we have a speed limit on dirt roads?
Uh, it didn't say that.
Yeah, it didn't say that. Most people should know, but...
They probably don't know that we travel on dirt roads out here.
Yeah. Okay. Separating minutes clerk from incumbent clerk. What's the... John remembered the notes here that, uh, if we adopt policy B D R three... I'm just wondering... What the... Because we've got a B D R four, which is a incumbent clerk slash minutes clerk combined, right?
Okay, now, what are you, where are you at and what are you asking me?
B D, B D R three.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Okay. We have a policy B D R four, which is a minutes clerk, incumbent clerk policy. So, we need to, if we add B D R three, do we need to delete B D R four? Or why, why would... What would be the separation of that?
Well, B D R three, it just tells me what the incumbent clerk's gonna do, what she's gonna be, what her bond is gonna be. And what B D R four says, it's different.
Trying to get what, should we add the additions, the suggestions, additions that are in B D R three to the policy B D R four? Rather than adopt B D R three and then have a B D R three and a B D R four?
Let me see, B D R four, because I don't, I don't know exactly what it says.
Is it also listed in the regulations?
Yes. I just didn't want to adopt this one and not have the policy for minutes clerk. Well, I'm gonna have to... One more record should we have?
Okay, okay, okay. B D, okay, B D R four, I mean, B D R, B D R four says you can hire the same person to do both jobs. If you've got, if you have individuals doing the job, this is for this, that person. If they're doing both of these things, you would have this. So, you could, it's, it's...
You could have that.
No, it's not. It, you could have two different people doing it. So, you're not gonna have a problem adopting both policies.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
Then on the, uh... Healthy and Fit, which is what, we've got a list of those. Serving on those. Healthy and Fit, so school committee. Yeah. Okay, um... The changes, and there appear to be, um, there's some deletions which I'm not in agreement to believe in. Where the principal shall give consideration to recommendations of the committee. The current policy right now says that in addition to, and prepare a report with recommendations. I don't feel like we should, um... My opinion is to not adopt that policy where we don't get a report. Because if we have, uh, if our policy supports any committee, I think we should have to have a report to connect them. Or we should have a... It'd be the last page of Healthy and Fit.
B D F D. Well, on note one, it says that. I mean, I, and, and maybe, maybe that's why it was added to, I don't know. But on note one, it said district boards of edu- education should establish appropriate reporting procedures following the presentation or recommendation to the principal or other school administrators. These procedures may include preparation of a report to be presented to the board of education.
Yes, that's, that's the note that we already have established that in our current policy. With our current policy, I'm gonna give you that page. That's our current policy. Outside of that.
That note was added, okay, I can, I mean, I can do that. I can, I can have that when I, when I, because when I send it to them, you know, they'll put a note up here and what they adopted and all that, so I can, I can make that change. Off of the note. That was probably what you just did first time, I think, four or five years ago.
Second. Yes.
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 Both to approve or not to approve for American identity assurance coming to the service, we make a couple of school section motions, ask them to change school year.
Yes.
Yes.
Both to approve or not to approve year inspection, including the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Do we have a, uh... What, where will we at last year?
Uh, yeah, we, I mean, we've had some, we have money in cupboard with me.
Okay.
I mean, is the year when inspection was, is it up last year or is that...
Do what?
Yes, it's just, I mean, I think he was in here today, that's what he was doing today, going through everything, so...
One second.
About this?
Yes.
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 Both to approve or not to approve the student procurement procedures and practices for each new program to the program system.
And that's just so we can, we can have a federal program, we can have a lunch program. It's, it's them doing, going by the rules.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Both to approve or not to approve the, um, the early school hours for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Make the motion, please. Yes.
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 Both to approve or not to approve the internal attendance review committee for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
And you have to add, it's one of your list of committees, teachers, Will Anderson, Dustin Smith, Bo Westfall, and then Mr., uh, Mr. Meriwether and myself, we also look over those, I guess.
Yes.
Yes.
Both to approve or not to approve the Healthy and Fit School Advisory Committee, so school committee for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
I make the motion to approve that Healthy and Fit School Advisory Committee.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Both to approve or not to approve the bomb fire raging request related to the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. The F A, for student resources supply, for the topic, and the term of employment supply, we can prove that there's a tax change.
Yes.
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 Consideration and possible action to approve the bomb items, the surplus and delegate items, please, please. To the bomb five four, pick up, and she is willing to handle that.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Consideration of possible action to solicit sale of goods, so far, and surplus items, the board will have the right to reject in, in all areas, not in the... Then you have to carry your tables and sheet.
What this is for, I have to put this in, I'll have to put it, I'll put it online and I'll, I'll put a couple of ads in paper to get sealed in, because that's really not the way I can, I can get rid of this stuff, it's, it's...
And then why that board next board?
Prob-, I'm, probably next board meeting is my, is my thoughts.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the board's executive session, we discuss all personnel decisions and requirements for twenty five minutes, yes, and one. Resignations received today, persons of modification, and long-term suspension of teachers, we discuss in the board's state high country, in the board's conference.
Menocap Board of Education, into executive session.
August eighth at eight oh two P M. Provided by Title twenty five O S section three oh seven. Free one, open statutes discussed upon resignation date, notice modification, and long-term suspension of school district. Uh, discussing former certified teachers under temporary contract, the school year employment, certified speech pathologist for two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. In the executive session, the board discusses the items, the board return to open session at eight thirty one P M. Memory present for the executive session, the resort board Ferguson Boyer, also present long-term suspension of student. The matters, uh, contained, uh, provided by Title twenty five O S section three oh seven, being one of the open state branches assessing upon resignation date. Notice modifications, long-term suspension of district student, discussing former certified teachers under temporary contract for sixteen seventeen school year, and former certified speech pathologist for two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
I remember saying, accept or not to accept resignations received today, Mr. Pecat, do you have a recommendation?
I make, uh, I have a recommendation that we accept the recommendation of Jacinda Ferro and, uh, Mrs. Holt.
I have to have you go.
Yes.
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 Both to approve or not to approve employment of certified teachers under temporary contract for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
I need someone to make a recommendation that we hire Mercedes Key and Ashley Murray as certified teachers under temporary contract for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
So move.
I vote, yeah?
Yes.
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 Both to employ or not to employ certified speech pathologists for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
I need someone to make a recommendation that we hire, uh, Christie Johnson as a certified speech pathologist for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any new business?
No new business.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Give a second.
Yes.
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 Yes.